America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to say that Councilor Holbrook is absent tonight because she's got that cold that's been going around that most of us have been battling with. Roll call.
Councilor Donovan?
Here.
Councilor Katerina?
Here.
Councilor St. Clair?
Here.
Councilor Blaze?
Here.
Councilor Benedict?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Okay, we'll start with general public comments, three minutes, name and address, please.
Good evening, Katie Foley, 3 Lucky Lane. I do have just a few quick comments this evening. The first was, and I'm bummed Jessica's not here, I wanted to update my clink bag count. I have turned in three full bags. Not sure where the rest of the council is, or if you guys should have a bar graph out in the hallway, maybe keeping track of who has turned in how many. First comment I wanted to, or piece I'd like to point you to this evening is just in reference to a supporting strategy that I included in my minority report a few weeks back. As I look down to our neighbors in the south and I see what's happening with the US Fish and Wildlife and the beach in Saco, I'm very concerned. It turns my stomach, quite frankly, and I hope that you guys are also paying attention to that. These kinds of, these federal agencies cannot continue to legally impose their will on local municipalities to legislate the social behavior of their people. If they could, they would. Instead, they're resorting to picking off small towns, one by one, and honestly, it makes me think we shouldn't give up a thing in our animal control ordinance because, just like the bully on the playground who keeps coming back for more, they will surely come back here. I guess what I really want to know, and maybe some of you have the very same question that I do, is that what does it actually take for them to respect the citizens of the voice of a town and respect the local laws that we choose? So remember when I said to you, if you want to go fast, go alone, but if you want to go far, go together, I'm encouraging you to reach out to our neighbors in Saco and think about a regional strategy in terms of how US Fish and Wildlife is attempting to legislate our towns. My second point is in regards, in response to an email from this afternoon. It spoke to process and talked a little bit about history, process not mattering, and that's in the past, why should we worry about that? This is very concerning to me because over and over again, after the election, I was told that we only won the election because people in town didn't like or support the process. So which is it? Does process matter or does it not matter? Does integrity matter or does it not matter? You can't tell me on one hand that it doesn't and then have it the other way. So process and integrity do matter a hundred percent of the time, and if you don't believe that, I'm not sure if you should be serving our town. And last but not least, I talked a few meetings back about the hardest thing to do, especially in a public forum, is to admit a mistake and say you were wrong. But that's what I feel like I have to do tonight, and so I'm here to tell you, I made a big mistake. And one of those mistakes was, in my angst, because my life is busy, to try to help come to a solution, I maybe went too fast. Is that my time? I can't tell.
Yes.
It is?
It is.
All right.
Go ahead, just finish.
Okay. So my mistake is this. It was presumptuous for me to think that without a formal election with my dogs members, that I can speak for them. And so what I intend to do over the next couple of weeks is take a deep breath, to step back, give them that opportunity to make me their official leader, and then let them vote on what they want to do. I understand your process is underway and you've got to do what you want to do, I respect that, and I will continue to keep the channels of communication open.
Thank you.
Our every other week discussion for three minutes. Liam Summers, Holmes Road. I thought tonight would be the first chance to review the council's proposed ordinance revisions, and I'm glad to see that we're not discussing it actually, because I hope that means you've decided to take this additional time to revise certain portions of it to more accurately reflect the vote that was taken on the first referendum. But with that, I would like to step away for a minute from the issue at hand, instead draw focus to what I truly believe is the most critical component in all of this, and that's ethics. I would simply ask that each of you take a moment to reflect on your decision-making process to this point and ask yourself, are you comfortable that those decisions are made in a transparent and ethical manner? Are you confident that those decisions would stand up to scrutiny, were they to be subjected to it? And are you comfortable that whatever support you're providing a fellow counselor is well-earned and merited and truly reflects your position? I think Councilor Benedict calls it the "they-from-theyville" situation. We don't want to lump everybody into the "they" portion. We want you each to have your own voice. You are all keenly aware that whatever decisions you make will be subject to such scrutiny. So this interim time is critical to ensure you are each well-informed regarding the manner in which this situation has been managed by your peers, and that you as a counselor are not getting lumped into that general pool should there be areas of ethical misconduct brought to light later on. I hope that I can count on each of you to do a proper level of discovery into all aspects of the management of this process, ask those hard questions that your fellow counselors, of your fellow counselors, and then decide for yourself what you believe to have been ethical. Lastly, I will close with a request that Counselor Donovan recuse himself willingly from any vote on the proposed ordinance derived by the ad hoc committee. As a beach area resident of Higgins Beach and a sitting member of the ad hoc committee, he has a very specific interest in the outcome of the vote that I believe is a significant conflict of interest that creates questions about any vote taken. If Counselor Donovan declines, I would ask the committee to take this up as a matter of procedure. We all want to ensure that this vote is taken as fair, unbiased, and can withstand any questions of, was it done ethically? Until we get past that hurdle, this does not go away. Thank you for your time.
Pamela Rottner for King Street, Pine Point. During the ad hoc committee, the subject of a special tag for dogs was brought up by the one council member that was part of the committee. He thought having the dog owners buy a special tag for the dog was a good way to control off-leash dogs. He said that it was a privilege to be able to have your dog off-leash on the beach, and if the dog misbehaved, that tag would be pulled and the owner would never be able to come back to the beach with that dog again. I read a newspaper article similar to the dog tag privilege, and I'd like to share that. The same counselor as a private citizen was involved in this. On Higgins Beach, this person of means bought a beautiful house that was alongside of a street that allowed parking. This person of means didn't like that the surfers were parking there. I think she said it was a party scene every night.
Excuse me, we're sticking to the subject you're talking about.
This is the subject. I'm going to get there.
You're going into a different realm of parking.
I'm not. I'm going to get there. I will tie it together very quickly. He wanted, the fact, this man of means tried his best to get rid of that parking. The fact is, according to him, parking on the street is a privilege. He wanted to charge $65 for a parking pass. Then, if they misbehaved, we can pull their pass and they can never park on the street again. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? After the parking ban was denied, the fact is, he got the town council and the current town manager to use taxpayers' money to build a six-foot-high and 100-foot-long wooden shack.
Ma'am, excuse me, you're out of order.
I am not.
You're attacking a fellow counselor.
I haven't mentioned anybody's name.
You're out of order, sit down.
You know, this is unfair. This has been unfair from the beginning, and it is still unfair.
You're out of order, sit down.
You are out of order.
Oh, really?
Yes.
What, are you in a movie?
No, but you are out of order.
Who is next? Anyone next? There will be no personal attacks on the council. You speak to the subject that you want to speak to, period.
Good evening, Joanne Mahoney, 18 Pillsbury Drive. Good evening, council. My comments tonight are based on what I heard at the March 5th workshop by a counselor and the articles in the recent papers. I am aware some of the articles may not have gotten it completely correct, so I wait for your final draft. I walked away March 5th thinking, oh no, how did we get to this again? And when I sought the council, prior to Council Donovan's proposal, we were heading in the right direction to a fair approach to all. When council has something put before them, by democratic process, you vote, and the majority rules. The same should have applied from the very beginning, after a 73% majority vote. From a special referendum returned to this council, the expectation to go back to the original dog ordinance. Please give credence and uphold this expectation within the decisions you will make very soon. As my elected representatives, I want to have confidence in you, knowing you are respecting the majority, and more importantly, the will of the majority. The latest proposal is just not acceptable. It will cause confusion and set up in place limitations far more than where any of this needs to be. Suggested protected areas on hypothetical locations of nests that may or may not appear will create limitations not necessary. If this is truly about protecting the plover and not a special interest agenda to get dogs off the beach, then protect the plover. When and where they are actually nesting, please demarcate those nests. Better signage, better fencing, better enforcement, that's the right road to be on. I cannot say enough times, we are already Scarborough and Western Beach designated as no-dog beaches, available at all times to those that would rather not be with dogs. Scarborough Marsh is a wonderful sanctuary for birds and bird lovers. Pine Point and Higgins Beach should remain as dog-friendly as possible. These beaches provide a way of life for many that include pets in their daily lives and their activities. My concern is, this panel is going to consider implementing winter hours, even though winter hours cannot be based on the pretext of protecting the plover, and that's why we're here. But rather, an effort by a minority group to remove dogs from the beaches, remember, Scarborough and Western are already dog-free. There are very few people on the beaches during the winter months, except the regulars that frequent, myself included, and some days I don't encounter a person or a person with a dog. Why overreach again? The majority of people I have spoken to, who are not following this as closely as some, think this was resolved with the vote back in December, and yet here we are debating and trying to convince council how important it is to maintain our rights. I'm almost done. One has to wonder on the judgment of the panel if it continues to make decisions to drive, to create more limitations on the people of this town, rather than to strive for the solutions to maintain our maximum freedoms. Oddly enough, some of us, the group who actually would be your best advocates and ambassadors on the beach, to protect the plover, are the dog votes who have been involved from the beginning, who are fully aware of the issues, myself included. Make this easier for the locals and the visitors to comply with. Do not set up something and set us up to fail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Suzanne Foley Ferguson, 331 Black Point Road. I just want to get this on the record. The town of Saco and the Army Corps in Saco is getting the same pressure from the US Fish and Wildlife Service that the town of Scarborough did. And I want to get on the record that the US Fish and Wildlife Service office is out of control. Our beaches are not wildlife sanctuaries. They do have wildlife sanctuaries, one's called the Rachel Carson National Wildlife Refuge. It's in our town as well. It's over 500 acres of that. Our beaches are public beaches. Now, last meeting, you guys talked about dividing the beaches, and I'm not going to comment really on that, because the papers reported that it's going back to these beach-release type dates, which if a bird crosses the line, then the whole beach will be blocked off. I don't know if that's true or not, because I haven't seen the ordinance, but if it is true, I have to air my concern and tell you why. We don't want the US Fish, or may not, making decisions about our beaches, because they misrepresent the facts, and this is the fact I want on the record. From your civil proceeding document of the notice of violation, it states, "On April 12th, 2004, the service sent a letter to the respondent, the town, which repeated the importance of keeping dogs leashed," and I'm skipping some, "and reminded the respondent, the town, that as recently as 2003, a piping plover was killed by a dog on one of their beaches." That's a legal document, US Fish and Wildlife Service, saying that a dog killed a plover. Now, I'm going to go back to the report of that plover, the incident report. Maine Otterbon, 2003 report. A second carcass was found on Pine Point. Both crow and dog tracks were seen in the vicinity of the exposure, but not in the exposure, as well as human footprints. It was originally assumed that the adult attempted to lure the crow away from its nest, but our initial assessment may not be of much value, since determining the exact predator is difficult. We sent the bird to University of Michigan. We heard a plausible alternative, theory however, from a law enforcement officer, after he examined the carcass and heard the report. He suggested that an attack on the adult plover might have been from a dog on the beach. He hypothesized, these are not my words, hypothesized, alternative, plausible, plausible theory, that the human footprints came from a dog's owner who tossed the carcass back, tossed the carcass back into the exposure after the dog had inadvertently killed it. He's got this wild, crazy theory that this person killed the bird, threw it back into the exposure, then the US Fish and Wildlife takes that and says it as fact. A bird was not killed in 2003. We still don't know if there's one now. We haven't seen the report. I am very tired, and I want my counselors to stick up to the US Fish and Wildlife. Please, please work with Saco. Contact the page, contact your thing, they're out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name's Peter Hayes, 5 Union Hill Lane, Scarborough. And I, a little different, Ben, I've been in this community 13 years. I've never attended one of these meetings. I've always thought the town council did a great job of representing our interests. I am frustrated and appalled by how this council has handled this whole issue. I do not understand a democracy, and I'll tell you, I'll give kudos to Mr. Benedict, who I have sent emails. He and I have had back and forth, we've agreed to disagree, but in a respectful and civil way. I have sent emails to all of you. Some of you I've never heard from, others I've heard, I don't agree with you and I don't need to talk to you. I'm a taxpayer, and I don't understand how, if you can send something to a special ballot and three-quarters of those voting say they don't want more restrictive laws, how you feel in your arrogance that you know better than the residents what we should have. I encourage you to think about that. When a democracy says you're supposed to represent the majority interest, not special interests, not your own agendas. The town has spoken, and it's clear the town does not support, I mean, this is just a manufactured issue, as you just heard. There's no evidence that dogs are involved at all. So again, I have never attended one of these things, but I'm appalled. You are supposed to work for us, the town residents. You're supposed to represent our interest. We have expressed our interest. You have completely ignored them, disrespected them, and frankly, you have disseminated so much misinformation. I'm appalled at how you've handled this. I hope you consider what the town has already voted on and put that into your considerations as we move forward. This is just appalling. This is not how a democracy is supposed to work. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Drenzo, 3 Lucky Lane. Seems to me when all of these controversies began, our focus was on, how are we going to protect the plovers that are currently here in Scarborough? And somewhere along the line, it feels like we shifted our focus from how do we protect our current plovers to how do we make our town more of a sanctuary and attract new plovers and grow the plover population, and particularly on our beaches, by creating sanctuaries-like areas. My question for the council would be, what is going to happen if we are successful in growing the plover population? And instead of dealing with one or two pairs, as we've been dealing with, which obviously has created some controversies already in this town, what is going to happen if two or three years from now, we are so successful, because we've now designated sanctuary areas in our beaches, that we now have 30 or 40 pairs of plovers? What are we going to be doing then? Are we going to be saying, okay, tourists, you've got to stay away now, because we can't have people and 30 pairs of plovers in the same location? So I would just ask you to give that some thought, about where we're headed in this direction. We all want to see the plovers be safe, but if we attract plovers to an unsafe, I mean, when they come by in April, for instance, and they look down and they say, oh, look, the beach is empty, what a great place to nest, and then July hits, and there are thousands of people everywhere, trampling all over the place, and it's not a safe place for these guys. So if we grow the population, the plover population to a point, I see that as setting these plovers up to fail. And I would just like you to think about that, if you could. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Next, minutes of March regular meeting. All those in favor? Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
None at this time, no.
None at this time. Treasurers' warrants, have those signed?
After we...
Order number 1401 is a 7:00 PM public hearing in action on the renewal request for a junkyard permit from AGagnon and E. Perry Metal located at Rigby Road. This item had been tabled back in January due to some outstanding issues, and as noted in the memo, the issues have been addressed in the code office, recommends approval.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the permit? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
In action.
Counsel, order, submit. Do you have motion? So moved. Second. Discussion?
What seems in order?
Why was it tabled in January? Why was it tabled in January?
There were issues that the facility was not in compliance with the code, and we worked with them, and subsequently, they have come into compliance, so it's back before you.
All in favor?
Order number 1424 is a 7:00 PM public hearing in second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance to add historic preservation and wildlife review standards to enable municipal capacity of DEP site law review.
Dan, do you have something?
Dan, in the interest of time, perhaps you could speak to the next three orders, as they're related.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Bacon, Town Planner. As the town manager suggested, these three orders are all related and essentially have the same language in them for the same purposes. And these amendments are to the zoning ordinance and our two other development review ordinances, the subdivision review and site plan review ordinances, and they're proposed in our efforts to actually receive municipal capacity or local review authority of a DEP development review process called Site Law, which is a lengthy review process for larger development projects. And it's in our efforts to streamline development review and eliminate some of the duplicative land use review that occurs right now between the town and the state. And these amendments focus on adding a historic review at the local level. Currently, that's done by the state when it goes through site law review, and this now, with these amendments, could be done by the planning board rather than the state agencies. It also adds a step for larger development projects to be reviewed by state inland fisheries and wildlife, and they provide advisory comments to the planning board. Right now, the process is that they would do that at the state level, and then DEP would incorporate those comments. So, again, this is language that's mirrored in all three ordinances, and it adds the historic review process and that IF&amp;W review, and once this is passed by the council, the state would give the town this municipal capacity, so that the site law review is no longer necessary for larger development projects in our growth area of town.
Just if I could, by way of further introduction, not in the specifics of these orders, but this is really, has everything to do with a multi-year goal the council has had, really to streamline and simplify as best we can the local development review process, and really, in large part, due to Dan's expertise and that of his staff, we're in a position to be able to apply for so-called municipal capacity. This could be a really big deal for the business community and those coming before the planning board. Not that we change or lessen our standards, it's that we can really speed up the process. And it may be as much as six months for some development reviews, and that could be significant for a project. So we're excited to bring this forward, and I just want to congratulate Dan and the staff for really being the reason that we can even have this conversation.
Okay, I think...
I have a question for Dan.
Shall we move that?
Yeah. Motion and...
Public hearing, Karen first.
A public hearing. Yeah, we, that's what I was going to say. Anyone from the public would like to speak to order 1424? Okay, seeing none, close that. Motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Counselor, comments or discussion? Yes?
I just have a question that's not meant to be laughed at by anybody, but in these wildlife review standards, who has their input for that?
The...
Not the IFW, I don't know.
The state inland fisheries and wildlife has review. And currently, through Site Law, they have a much more comprehensive review than they would under this scenario. Under this scenario, they have the ability, they have a 30-day window to comment on a development project being reviewed by the town and the town's planning board, so their advisory comments, they're not, they don't have regulatory authority under this scenario. So it's, to get their input, and the planning board is the deciding body in the process.
Does that answer your question?
So then they could come up, the IFW could come up with guidelines, as they're doing with our beaches?
Well, beaches would not likely even be an area of review. This is more for commercial development occurring in our commercial zones, a new subdivision, so this isn't geared around use of natural resource, such as the beaches, the marsh, things like that. So, but their advisory comments, the recommendations the state agency would have, the planning board has the ability to decide how they're incorporated or not in a project.
Thank you. Katerina?
Yeah, thank you. If I could ask just a clarifying question on that, maybe, as it stands now, do we already have IFW review on certain types of development in this town, under the state laws or whatever, for planning?
Yeah, under Site Law...
So it's nothing new?
No, it's a lesser review than today's review by the state. This, that's, the whole purpose of this is, Site Law is entirely administered by the state, and IF&amp;W has direct decision-making under that review. Now, it's, the jurisdiction's given to the town, but they have the ability to comment, to make recommendations. So it's less involvement than currently.
So what you're saying, Dan, is they have, they can make a comment, it's not their decision, it's the town's decision, that this will make it the town's?
The planning board's decision on...
So it takes that decision-making out of their hands?
It does.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Oppose? Seeing none? Seeing none?
Order number fourteen twenty-five is a seven P.M. public hearing in second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter four oh five B, the site plan review ordinance to add historic preservation and wildlife review standards to enable municipal capacity of D.E.P. site law review.
Did you, yeah, did you have anything?
I didn't, no. This is the site plan review, the addition to that ordinance as well.
Public hearing. Anybody would like to speak to order fourteen twenty-five? Seeing none? Do I have a motion from the council?
Move approval?
Second. Discussion? No one has anything on this one? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? None.
Order number fourteen dash twenty-six is a seven P.M. public hearing in second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter four oh six, the subdivision ordinance to add historic preservation and wildlife review standards to enable municipal capacity of D.E.P. site law review.
Okay, I'll open up to public hearing. Anybody from the public like to speak on order fourteen twenty-six? Seeing none? I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any just council discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed?
Order number fourteen dash twenty-nine is a seven P.M. public hearing in action on the new request for a liquor license and a food handlers license from Sheila Micali doing business at the Pine Point Grill LLC located at two forty Pine Point Road, which was formerly the First and Last Tavern.
Okay, anyone like to speak to this? Order fourteen twenty-nine. No one? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Order, um, do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved. Second.
Council discussion? If there is none, and all those in...
There's another question, but I'm not sure of the answer. Within the town of Scarborough, are we or are we not granted the ability to give out so many liquor licenses?
We don't have anything in place that would limit the number of liquor licenses that would issue.
The state doesn't have it?
No.
Good question.
Do these people have to go in front of the state to get a state license?
Well, in order for them to go to that, that level, the town council has to approve it, because they're serving liquor on premise, the council has to approve it, and then they move it on to the state level.
Okay, thank you.
This particular business, it, you know, I mean, it's changed hands, but they've had liquor licenses for fifteen, maybe fifteen years, roughly? Thirteen, fifteen years? So it's not a new one, it's just a reinstatement.
It's shifted hands.
Pardon?
It's just changed owners.
They're changing owners again, right. Good. Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? None. Old business.
None at this time.
New business?
Order number fourteen dash thirty is a first reading and schedule a second reading on the bond order for the two thousand fourteen municipal and capital improvements.
Would you like to introduce this?
Yeah, I would.
For those returning councillors, you'll probably recall, this, about the time every year, we do come forward and seek bond authorization. Many of these projects should be familiar to you, the vast majority were approved as part of the capital improvements budget in the current fiscal year. There's one that the council will probably recall as well, Constock Farm. It references a prior approval back in the two thousand three, two thousand four timeframe. I suspect that's because that was the first year of the land conservation bond, or second go-around of the land conservation bond, and we want to expend those funds before we move to later authorizations. But essentially, all of these projects have been approved previously by this council or a past council, yet we do need to come back and seek your authority and authorization to actually fund these projects through different terms of longer-term financing as opposed to being appropriated through the budget. Ruth Porter, Finance Director is here if you have any specific questions on the tactical aspects of this, but that's what we're here seeking your approval to do.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Questions?
Are some of these, some of these are completed already, right?
Yes. So in those instances, we're paying ourselves back. We've got to find them through the course of this year. But yes, some of them are completed.
So this is merely just to authorize a bond?
Yes. It's authorizing the borrowing. Correct. Just to recall, the council met previous to this, this meeting in a workshop setting with its auditor, there was some discussion around the fund balance. When we go to sell these bonds, that fund balance and the positive trend that we've been able to build over the last several years should come in helpful to us in terms of securing the best bond rating possible, which ultimately reduces our interest expense across the town. So it all does tie together.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Order number fourteen dash thirty-one is act to approve the resolve to accept donations for the fuel assistance program.
Anything to add to that?
No, would you like to read that?
Sure. Here resolved accepting donations for fuel assistance program, be it hereby resolved by the town council as follows, that the town of Scarborough gratefully accepts the pledges and donations from the following businesses and/or persons that have been collected to date to be used for the fuel assistance program, Mary Adams, James Fee, Mr. and Mrs. Michael Fontaine. And be it further resolved that each business, organization, and/or person be recognized for their generosity, generous donations as tokens of the town's appreciation.
Okay. I presume there's a motion, I presume?
Yep. Yes.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Just if I could, I heard mention from the podium about the Clink program, that is an active fundraising program. In addition to this sort of outright donation, we just checked the account today, we're, we've given out well over a hundred bags, not many have been returned, so I just want to take the opportunity to thank those that took a bag. Make sure you fill it and return it, we'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, number eight, non-action items.
None.
None. Okay, standing and special committees liaison reports, and we will start with Councilor Sinclair. Nothing to report. Councilor Blaze?
We had a senior advisory board meeting the other day, but nothing of significance to bring up.
Council Benedict?
Coastal Waters had a meeting last week, and there was really nothing of importance or decided upon at them, so that's that.
Okay. None. Councilor Caterina?
I'm trying to remember where I've been.
You want me to come back to you?
Conservation Commission continues to work on, what we work on, a couple of things we're looking at continue to be the marsh migration and flood, possible flood zone issues and the like, long-term planning, long-range planning, just looking at, again, Gorham Roads, some rezoning, there will be a meeting, and I don't have it right in front of me, in April of the abutters. I happen to be one of the abutters, so I'll be there. But notices will go out to abutters regarding that, and that's all I have to report on.
I just have one question to that, either Tom or maybe Councilor Caterina, as to when the feds were planning on scheduling that meeting for the new flood maps.
Oh, yeah, good question.
Yeah, I wish I could be more specific. They've been elusive at best, they've offered to participate in meetings via phone, which doesn't strike me as a very effective means. I think their preference would be to wait till the appeal process is either underway or completed, which seems frankly a bit backward to me. But it's been a source of some great frustration in getting, pinning them down to a particular date. And I think it's frankly a matter of resources. Every community would like to host a meeting, and I don't, I think they're fearful of agreeing to one for fear that they'll be out every night of the week for the next six weeks. It's not a good excuse, but that's...
No, that's what they did. They did it on us. And we're getting all the questions.
Right. And I couldn't add anything more to that.
Okay, thank you. Council Donovan?
Yeah, I think the FEMA map situation is at that point where it's going through the publication in the Federal Register, and that is, it's just a step-by-step process. And I think people are anxious because it's an obvious impact on coastal properties in our community as well as others, but we have a fair number, and so people are quite legitimately interested in knowing where it's at, and I think patience is really the only thing that we can offer at the present time, because they will, they will be holding public hearings for members of the public. They've represented that, and so that, that's about all that can be reported at this time. Most of my time has been spent working on the, well, the Ad-Hoc Animal Control Committee is done, but continuing to try and develop a compromise proposal for protecting pervers and allowing dogs off leash to the greatest extent possible, spending a lot of time on that, and was very pleased at the unanimous support expressed by the council at the last meeting. For those who were not privy to that meeting, since that last meeting, another member of the Ad-Hoc Committee, who strongly supports the dogs privileges, Margot Huchkins endorsed the compromise in a communication to us, and that was very nice to see because it demonstrates that we've come a long ways, and we're making real progress, and I think that's a great position to find ourselves in. And I think it really comes a bit in the nick of time, because budget season is upon us, and we are going to be out straight with the budget process for the next weeks and months. Finance Committee met this week, we're going to be meeting weekly during the month of April, and next Wednesday, the town manager is going to present the proposed town budget at a special town council meeting. So this is a very important time of year for the town, as the town and school budgets are carefully analyzed, and we're going to do the best we can to balance the interests of keeping services at the highest level we can while being respectful of those many taxpayers who have seen their taxes go up a great deal over the last four years.
Thank you. My report as far as, on the Transportation Committee, was, is there anything new on that? I was unable to attend again.
Transportation Committee is now kind of moving beyond the Oak Hills area, and is starting to sort out what their next priorities are. So if there are transportation issues that folks, members of council, and the public would like them to look at, this is the time to kind of get it in front of them, and they're going to start to prioritize their next level of work. Beyond that, I know Mike Shaw attended last night, provided an update on the Pine Point Bridge replacement project, just slated for the fall of two thousand fifteen. I think that's about it. There was only three members there last night, so no actions taken.
Once again, I was got caught in that while working in the fire department, so I wasn't able to attend again. Okay, as far as Appointments Committee meeting tonight, I'd like to oppose Bob Basely, his name to the historical preservation, for a vote, I believe, is April second.
Yes.
And that will do it for Standing Committee's report, Town Manager's report.
My heart stopped the minute when Council Donovan talked about just a week from now in these chambers, I'll be presenting the budget. It is a preoccupation, to say the least, of mine right now, but things are shaping up. I know the superintendent will present the school budget to the school board tomorrow evening, so I anxiously await that part of the budget. Though I don't have any involvement in the preparation of that, it is nonetheless a very important part of the overall budget, so I wait anxiously for that piece, hopefully I get that tomorrow. And again, there'll be a special public meeting on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, for me to do that presentation. A couple of further comments on the flood maps. Upon publication in the Federal Register is when the appeal process starts, and I'm not aware that that has actually occurred yet, but I think it is imminent in the next several weeks. So it seems very clear that we'll be in the appeal period sooner than later. In preparation for that, the town has hired a consultant and will be prepared to present at least one appeal on behalf of hundreds of, potentially hundreds of Scarborough residents and property owners. One thing I want to raise is that we've been very closely engaged and involved with our congressional delegation, and Senator King was successful in getting a bill passed that will allow, will require FEMA to reimburse municipalities for a successful appeal. And that ends up being a pretty important deal, so to the extent that their work is inappropriate or shoddy or correct, and we proved that point through the appeal process, all of our costs can be recouped for that effort. So I very much thank Senator King's efforts in that regard, not just for sentiment, but I think it's actually a tangible benefit to us. We've tried everything in our power to sort these issues out before the appeal period, but it appears at this point that we're not going to be able to. The other piece of legislation that I think is still pending in the U.S. Congress has to do with pushing back some of the flood insurance rate increases. This is coincident with the map updates, if you will, but it's almost insult to injury. These are, there's a federally subsidized, if you will, national flood insurance program. The Congress last year changed that and made it more market rate, if you will. What it means for certain folks in that program is they could see as high as a tenfold increase in their premiums. So it really is a big deal for those that are involved. That's still very much in play, and I'm not aware of any final resolution, but there is pending legislation to address that issue. And lastly, just a couple of housekeeping matters. NDOT will be hosting a public meeting here in these chambers on April first, six P.M. It's regarding a project that they have to upgrade the Route one fourteen and Running Hill Road intersection. For anyone that's tried to traverse that area of town in the morning or in the evening, it's a very busy area. Essentially, they'll be putting a slip lane, I'll call it, or an extra lane on one fourteen to allow traffic to continue to pass up and down one fourteen, as cars are waiting to turn onto one fourteen on Running Hill Road. Should produce some fairly significant improvements to that traffic congestion at that intersection anyway. And lastly, forgive me, I don't have the date, but I know the Habitat Project will be holding another update meeting, or a neighborhood meeting, if you will, it's certainly open to the public. It's a date later this month, and forgive me, I shouldn't have mentioned it if I don't have the date in mind, but it's an effort to re-engage the neighborhood as this project is moving forward, and I'll make certain to make sure the members of the press get a copy of that press release and the date so we can publicize that meeting. Available for questions if you have any.
Any questions? The manager? None. Okay, guess we'll start with Councilor Benedict. Councilor comments?
Not at the moment. Thank you very much.
Councilor Blaze?
No.
Councilor Sinclair?
Uh, I, I'm anxious, I mean, I know this is going to come to no surprise to any of you, but I'm anxious to get a copy of the ordinance. I think it needs to be looked at and gone over, and there's definitely going to be a process that goes with it, just like every other process that happens with ordinances and matters before the council, there's first reading, second reading, public discussion. We're still listening. It's hard, it's hard sometimes to get negative feedback from people, but you are right in the sense that we are, you elected us into this position. in the sense that we are, you elected us into this position. So I hope that people understand that we are listening, that it is a process. I don't know, I'm frustrated again tonight, and I'm sure that some of you are. And I know that obviously people from the town are frustrated. It's an emotional issue. I think it's important to say that it's an emotional issue, not just for you, but for us also. Or I'll speak for myself, it's an emotional issue still for me. I think it's also important to know that there are other things, as emotional and as involved as the dog issue, is there are other things going on in the town that we have to be proud of. And I think it's, I'm always open to having discussions with people as far as responding to emails and things like that. I think, I can honestly admit, I probably need to be a little better at that. I'm sort of a talker in the sense that I do far better sitting down face-to-face with people than I do communicating over email or even phone calls. I'm always open to a phone conversation. I don't expect everyone to agree with my position on this, but I still think that there can be discussions that can be had. And I still, I still very much believe that we can get through this process and come out with an outcome that a majority of people can live with and accept. And I think this year is going to be a learning year for us. I don't see, even if this ordinance goes through and it gets passed, I think there's going to be bumps. I would expect there would be bumps. You know, I still have, I have some reservations about the complication of it. But I think that with the right education with enforcement, we can probably get through some of those issues. I think we've all said this, and I think that the public has said, we could pass a hundred ordinances and it's not going to matter if we don't have enforcement. So for me, that's still a big piece of the puzzle, and that needs to be dealt with. And I will say too, that I have a feeling that a lot of the issues that we're having too aren't necessarily from Scarborough residents, and that's still a piece of that for me too, is making sure that we're getting that education out to people that don't live in this town. That are, I do think it is a privilege for them to come to Scarborough and use our beaches. We pay to live here, we pay our taxes. Those are our beaches. And we have a right to protect those beaches, and you have a right to protect those beaches. And so I hope that we don't, people don't lose that motivation. They, those are your beaches, and we should be proud of them. They're beautiful. I mean, it's a lot of the reason why people move here. A lot of people that I've talked to, the reason they came here was those beaches from, and not just dog people, surfers, horse people, I mean, it's a huge slew of people out there. So in that sense, I love when people get fired up because we should be fired up. We should want to protect those beaches. This has never been, and I, from months, from six months ago, this has never been just a dog issue for me. This has been a people issue. This has never just been a plover issue. This has been a people issue. We have, I know people are going to get, I know like half of you are going to roll your eyes when I say this, but we have a responsibility to twenty thousand people in this town who love those beaches and expect us to protect them. So I know that this process hasn't made everybody happy. It hasn't, quite frankly, it hasn't made me real happy at times. But I believe in this council, and I believe that we're going to get there. And it's not, hasn't been pretty. I can, I'm the first person to say I have had some bad moments, but I still believe that we can get there. And I, we owe that to the people of Scarborough. So, sorry. Not really, I'm not sorry. What is it? Hashtag sorry-not-sorry? So, yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sinclair. Counselor Katerina?
Uh, yeah, I would just, I agree with what Kate said. I get a little frustrated with people when they're sending emails or talking to me and catching me on the corner or at Walgreens or wherever. This is not, this is a proposal. This is a proposed ordinance at this point. It's not set in stone. It still needs to go through hearings, we need to have input. My grandmother always told me, if you're going to disagree with someone, please disagree with them agreeably. And I'm hoping that we can maintain some decorum and reasonable expectations and communications that go on because the root of all issues in this world, quite frankly, is lack of communication or miscommunication. So, you know, I encourage people, as I've said, to keep communicating with us, come to the hearings, speak to us, but remember to keep it, the tone correct because you get much further in life with a correct tone with things. And again, remember this is proposed ordinance. It's just taking what the ad hoc committee came up with. It's been somewhat massaged. I, like Kate, am interested in seeing what the language is going to look like, and then we're going to work from there. So that's all I have to say about that. Secondly, I want to thank people again for fuel assistance bags. I have lots of them, if anyone wants one. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan?
I'm good.
You're good.
Covered everything I wanted to in my previous remarks. Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll say that I think that the ordinance that is proposed, that's coming forward, needs to be put into print, and the public needs to see what it looks like. And then I'll save my comments for once the public gets to see the full document and the, they'll see where the errors were in the reporting of the articles in the press. And then we'll go from there. I just had a couple of things to mention. Condolences to Fred Honeywell and the Honeywell family, and Rocky Rizberra and the Rizberra family of Rocky's passing. And I wish both families well. The, Jessica has the full list, was unable, like I said, to attend tonight because of a bad cold. So she has that list, and she said she'll, at the next meeting, she'll be reading some names for a while. And with that, do I have a motion for an adjournment? All those in favor? Opposed?